Do we have an affidavit publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got two nice presentations tonight. First one is Employee of the Year, Ms. Wohinkel. Want to come on up? Everybody knows Michelle, and I think most of the development community in the entire Omaha Metro knows Michelle as well. But I just wanted to read just a little bit of her nomination. And as a reminder of Employee of the Year, this is a nomination from the employee base throughout the entire city. So they make the nomination and then it comes forward. So this really is pure recognition. And I mentioned the building community. Michelle is, if you're not aware, is in the planning department. So all of the builders and developers that come through this area, Michelle is one of the key people they interact with. And we're having a record period with building and planning. And I say often that we've got one of the best planning departments in the metro, and it's because of the employees that we've got. And it's a small staff doing a lot. But anyway, I'd like to congratulate Michelle, 2014 Employee of the Year. And there were a number of nominations for the award. And so again, it was a pure recognition. Michelle's been with the planning department for eight years, and just this last year was promoted to City Planner. And as I mentioned, how busy that department is, it's literally a staff of three people handling all of the development that's coming through the city. So they are busy. And in addition to the peak period of building, Mrs. Butler was out for a while, and Ms. Wohinkel actually stepped up and did some of the clerk duties as well while she was on maternity leave. So again, part of this is the team spirit. And so we hear a lot from the developers about the professionalism of the planning department. Michelle's name is mentioned in the middle of a lot of that. So congratulations. We've got a plaque suitable for framing.
Thank you.
We also award a day off and a little bit of a monetary award.
Thank you.
Congratulations. As long as I'm here, I'll just jump to the next one. We also have another exciting report. We get to get our audit report. How exciting is that? Anyway, Jody Rhine with Horizon is with us. They are our outside audit firm. Jody, I'd like to invite you up for a presentation.
I did meet with the Audit Committee prior to this meeting, so I'll make this a brief summary. As you know, we have done your audit for several years. Again, we're doing it this year, and I'd like to thank Nancy and her staff for helping us with the audit. And to also note that it is a month earlier this year, so it was really pressing to get through all of this, but we needed it for a bond offering, so that was really good. Your audit report actually contains three opinions from us. The first one, which is on pages nine through 11, is the overall opinion, which indicates that your financial statements, you received an unmodified opinion, and it means that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with GAAP. The second opinion, which is towards the end, this report is actually 104 pages long, so the second opinion shows up on pages 99 and 100. And that is our report on internal controls that indicates that we did not identify any material weaknesses. And then that opinion also talks about we do some testing of your compliance with laws and regulations, and we did not identify any instances of noncompliance. The last opinion that is in your report this year, and that shows up on pages 101 through 104, you did expend more than $500,000 in federal funds this year. You had not for several years, but you did this year. So we were required to do a single audit. And so that report shows up there that indicates that you are complying with those regulations. So those are the three reports. They were all good reports that we issued. And that's all I really have, unless anyone has any questions.
Any management comments?
No, we did not.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Ingberg?
I just wanted to mention that, meeting with the Audit Committee prior to the meeting, I was interim chairman because we had elected one just for the council's edification. Troy Flores, since he was absent, is now the chairman of the Audit Committee by unanimous vote. But I just wanted to commend on behalf of the committee and the council, I suppose, the fine job Nancy and her staff did again this year dealing with the audit. And Jody and her firm again did a marvelous job, very clear, concise, and she kind of glossed over it, but they did, got it done a month early. So I wanted to mention that, too. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Hoynes, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I begin my report with what I think is very good news this evening, that we reached tentative agreements with all three of the labor unions in the last couple of weeks since we've last met. We're finalizing and providing documentation to those folks to take to their membership and anticipate that we will have approval of those three respective contracts. Again, by reference, Fraternal Order Police, International Association of Firefighters, and the Public Employees Classified Union. I just said, and I'd mentioned it before, but it's worth mentioning again, that the level of good faith negotiation and I think trust and respect for this body and the city and the employee groups. Granted, I haven't worked anywhere else, but I hear a lot of stories. And to look across the table and to shake their hands and make assurances and say, this is the way we're going to run for the next four years, I think that, and their four-year contracts that are coming up, it's really unusual. So when you see those folks in particular, and hopefully they'll come up here on approval, they deserve a lot of credit for that. Moving on, Mr. Mayor, real brief comment on the transition for Ordinance 1709, the library. I did send you an email on the transition plan. Mayor Black, myself, Chris Myers did meet with all the library employees, answered any questions they had, and had discussion with them about how that would go. Chris is the interim library director. Well, I think Robin's on until the 27th, the end of the month. Interim Director Matt is working with Chris to transition the administrative and personnel functions into our system. It won't all be done overnight, but we have a plan to get it done in a short order. And Chris is also, in fact, she went to the library board meeting earlier this afternoon and worked with them on the job description. They're beginning a search process for permanent director. And so I think that we're on the right track to the implementation of that ordinance. Two more quick things, Mr. Mayor. Veterans Park, we haven't talked a lot about that, but as you know, the foundation's taken a leadership role in fundraising and grant research. We'll be meeting with them tomorrow for an update on that and identified some potential grant sources. Finally conclude, Mr. Mayor, by advising the council that you, if you haven't written it down, the swearing-in for interim chief/deputy chief witted to the deputy chief position will be Monday, March 2nd, which is prior to you meeting again as a collective council. And also Chief Lyons, that will be his first day at work for the city of Papillion. So he will be here, so from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. down at the police station. We're going to be getting some public information out on this. There'll be an open house for the community to meet the new chief and to congratulate Deputy Chief Witted. And at 6:00 p.m. sharp then, there'll be a swearing-in ceremony for both of those men as they assume their new leadership roles with the police department. So you're certainly invited to that. And if you have any questions, give me a call and we'll try to answer. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Motion passes. Next is Item D1. Ordinance 1711, an ordinance approving the issuance of building bonds, public works project series 2015 of the city of Papillion Municipal Facilities Corporation, in a stated principal amount not to exceed $3,500,000. Approving and authorizing a bond purchase agreement with the corporation, providing for the sale of the bonds to the underwriter, authorizing a First Amendment to the lease purchase agreement with the city of Papillion Municipal Facilities Corporation relating to the construction of certain public works facilities, approving the execution of documents with respect to First Amendment to lease purchase agreement, and providing for the publication of this in a pamphlet form. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Glover. And council, you know, on bond issues, it's very typical that we always call for waiver of the second and third readings because of the timing of selling the bonds in the bond market or reduces the bond risk. But we do not have a supermajority tonight, so we will not do that. So we'll have the second hearing at the next council meeting and probably at that one request the waiver of the third for that same reason. So the only thing we have is the risk market, I mean, the risk of the bond market over the next couple of weeks. Next is Item D2, Ordinance 1712, an ordinance to approve the change of zone of certain real property within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Legally described as part of Lot 2, Sarpy County Industrial Park, replat 1, generally located south of the intersection of 126th Street and Giles Road, from Agricultural AG to Limited Industrial LI, to amend the official zoning map of the city of Papillion by changing the zoning district boundaries of the zoning map in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. Thank you. Item E1, Ordinance 1710, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Papillion, Nebraska, to amend the city of Papillion, Nebraska Police Pension Plan and Trust to authorize further actions and to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and the effective date hereof. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? Mr. Young is here. I don't know if you want to say anything, but recognize you're here.
Sometimes that's enough, Mayor.
If you'd state your name for the record.
Steve Young, mayor, city administrator, council, department heads. First of all, having chaired the police negotiating committee, I'd like to echo Dan's words and say, you know, Christie, Kerry, Carla, Chief, it was just short of a delight. I think once we got past the ground rules, it sailed. And I say that tongue-in-cheek, it was, I applaud you. It's a great city to work for. But today, I'm here as the chairperson for the Police Retirement Committee. And I can give you a brief overhaul of what this amendment is, but I think you probably, if you read it, you've got a good idea. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Next is Item F1, Resolution R150020, a resolution to approve an amendment to the master fee schedule pertaining to golf course fees and liquor license fees. Do we have motion to approve Resolution R150020? Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Motion passes. Next is Resolution R150026. This is a public hearing and a vote. Resolution to approve the one- and six-year road plan. This is a public hearing, and I'll call for proponents. Marty, I'm going to assume you are, no, Marty, yeah. I'm going to assume you're a proponent. Do you want to give any updates that need to be given as part of the public hearing or just wait for council questions? Okay. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R150026?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Mr. Mungard.
Yeah, I guess I have a question for Marty. On the Washington Street reconstruction, can you give us a timeline on when people can expect different segments of that road to be closed?
Yes, I can. We had our first update meeting for this year this afternoon, so we're going to start the next, this final year, it's going to start weather-dependent on Monday, March 2nd. There's notices that are going out to all the businesses in that area tomorrow. Message boards will be put up a week from yesterday, warning the motorists. But we'll be closing Bristol Street down to basically Windsor, and then there will be some restrictions from Cedar Dale up to Highway 370. Those projects there are anticipated to be done by July, and then the work from 370 south to Bristol Street will run from July until about the end of October. So contractors hoping to be done by the end of October, first part of November on this, on that project.
Okay, now, how much of that is north of 370?
The section north of 370 is going to run from 370 to Cedar Dale. That'll be head-to-head traffic. They'll be working on the west lanes first and then moving over to the east lanes.
So north of 370 will never get closed completely?
That will never get closed completely. That'll just, it'll get reduced down to head-to-head traffic. Starting first part of March, they'll be taking out the center median, and they'll be moving the traffic to the outside lanes. They've got to put some temporary pavement in there.
And that 370 to Bristol, is that the November 2015 completion deadline?
That is the completion, and they're hoping to have it done a month early is what their target, but...
So then, well, is it planned that by November 2015, all of that will be finished?
That is correct.
People will be happy to hear that.
Substantially completed, yes. Yes.
But that got clarified.
Started in 2007, but the important thing for the public to be aware, we were ready to start moving dirt in '07. We were right at the point of letting that contract when the first federal stimulus came into play on shovel-ready projects. And that then instituted a whole new series of reviews. And during that slowdown, then Nebraska had some additional reviews, or I think we came into some additional regulations from the state because of that delay. So then that delayed us some more, which is the reason we just started actually moving dirt last year. So it hasn't been delays on our side. We've been ready to move the whole time. But Mr. Mungard, your questions are very good, and we've been talking about the public education. I mean, this is probably going to be one of the most disruptive projects we're doing. It's one of our busiest intersections, so I think all council will just be talking to people about it, and we'll be doing a lot of education, and we'll get through next summer. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Marty, just a question with regard to 108th Street, the section of paving that's going to be by the fire station in Sumter. When is that planned?
We're designing that right now. It should be to the council here in the next month or so to let that bid. We're hoping to start that construction prior to school getting out, and then on the outer parts of it where we're not disrupting that road. And then when school's out, go full bore on that construction and try to have it done prior to the school season.
Okay. But I assume then the activities at Sumter?
Yeah, we're managing all the activities at Sumter, the races that Lori has out there and with the fire station and other stuff. So we're planning, we're building all that into the plans and specs.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Mungard.
Yeah, going, jumping forward to 2017 through 2019, the SRAM road design and construction there, 84th to 90th. Now, that's the segment that on the south side is the Springfield School District, right? I noted that there's no county or Springfield share being paid on that. Can you explain how that cost split is projected?
Well, it's basically, right now, it's, we're going to pay the 20% of the federal funding. We had agreements with the county on five sections of roadway, and we're working through them. They didn't want to participate on that section, so...
And that section is in the city limits, which makes it a little bit unusual as well.
I understand that, but then on the other hand, the only area of that that's open to development, well, it's not in our school district. That may be a minor point.
No, it's a major point.
Well, if we pave it, that makes it more attractive to, for development, which then increases the tax base of the Springfield School District, which I'm very happy that would happen. But yet, they get the benefit without participating in any cost. Is there discussions at all that could go that direction to have them share?
Well, any couple of comments, one specifically when that develops, however that develops. We will require their contribution to that. So just like we do any development, any development's got to contribute to the contiguous road. We would request that of that one, so in effect, we'd be getting paid back a little bit on that contribution. Specific to the boundary issue, that's a very active conversation down at the legislature right now with some of the learning community bills, and we are weighing in heavily on that. And it's our understanding that there's some discussions going on between the two school superintendents that might be arriving at a boundary. I've been asking to find out what those are, and they're not sharing that with me, but I'm being told there's conversations going on. So what I'm advocating very hard for is that the schools, the two schools, sign a boundary agreement contingent upon the learning community issues being resolved. That then would give us assurance to go down to the legislature to testify positively on all those learning community bills, because we know then the boundary would go away, I mean, would be resolved if those get passed. But absent a boundary agreement, we'd have a hard time testifying in support of those.
Why is the county not sharing in that? They just don't feel...
It's in the city limits. They contribute on the county roads. And that's where most of our roads that we develop are outside of our city limits in the ETJ. And so the developer contributes, the county contributes, but this one is in the city limits.
You know, I'm very much in favor of getting that improved and paved. It's been sitting there for years and years. It's just a strange part of the road system that has needed to be improved from years ago. But obviously, it hasn't because of the problems that the school districts that you've been pointing out, and that this issue about, which seems to, for many people, to be a nothing. Okay, there's a school district on one side and a different one on the other side. That seems to be a nothing, but clearly that has affected our development in that area. It has affected the ability to improve that street, and so we basically have a dirt road that goes right along, you know, that's in the city and goes right alongside the major development in the city.
Well, just to make a comment on that, and I think we're still on topic because it is affecting roads. And the clearest example of where that boundary is creating a problem, the visible one to the community is SRAM road from 84th to 90th. That is a direct result of the boundary. But to your question of where it's affecting development, and that does affect the roads, which impacts the one- and six-year road plan, is if you look at 72nd and Capehart, on the northwest corner is an 80-acre parcel of ag ground that has been on the market for sale for six or seven years. They're trying to actively sell it, and it's not selling. The tax assessed valuation of that piece of ground is $380,000. That $380,000 then probably creates $5,000 in taxes. The 80 acres directly north of it, contiguous, same city, same zoning, same water, same sewer, same intersection, the 80 just north of it, that tax assessed valuation is probably approaching $48 million. It has houses in it, and based on census data of per capita income, per family income, and all of that, each acre within that 80 probably is a million dollars' worth of household income. And so between the $48 million in property tax and the million in housing, you can see the taxes that are generated from that. And the census is telling us right now that about 48% of our houses that are going up and people moving in are coming from outside the state of Nebraska, so that's new tax dollars. That's all directly related to that boundary issue, and then you take that tax coming in, what would that do to the one- and six-year road plan? So it is a very serious issue.
Well, you know, and I'm glad to see it's on the plan. But clearly, I look at that and think, well, all right, once we pave that street, will there be development on the south side of the street? And I think, no, there won't be. No, the paving of that street won't make that land anymore developable than having it is now.
The only challenge I would make to that, where paving of the road could enable economic development, is if it would open it up to a non-residential use. So a commercial use, somebody from a commercial perspective wanting to buy that land, now that that road's improved, would they maybe be more willing to buy it? Maybe, because the school boundary issue doesn't really impact a commercial user.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, it's small odds, but it would be a positive.
I'm glad it's on the plan, and, you know, it is, as you say, a very visible evidence of problems we have that are beyond our control. And hopefully, by the time we start constructing that and get that done in 2020, I think, or 2019, maybe those problems will be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Glover.
I know we've had some discussion about this before, but looking into the crystal ball, when would we look at 6th Street and Cornhusker Highway from 84th Street up to 72nd?
Marty.
Not in your lifetime, Marty, or...
Well, it was in my lifetime 20 years ago, and then we, the council, we looked at it back then, and we were displacing, I think, nine or 10 homes at that time, and the council didn't want to displace those homes, so that was taken out of there. With the number of utilities and the water lines and the homes that we've got in there, that is a pretty costly project. But I would imagine it's going to be back on for Mr. Thompson to handle after my lifetime.
Well, I know we've discussed it before, and I know it's a very costly project.
Yeah, we can start looking at that again, Jim.
I just kind of wondered whether there's been recent discussion or if it's still somewhere in the pile.
Also got the water tower there, that structure impacts it. And then when you're at 72nd and Cornhusker, that's high traffic. When you come down to 84th and Cornhusker, you're back into Old Town where you want to slow down the traffic. So some of it is going to be philosophical as well. Is that a thoroughfare or is that a slowing down coming into town? So some of that will probably be policy discussions by, discussion by the council as well. Mr. Mungard?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is there a, I'll close the pub, well, we were on council discussion. Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
Motion passes. Next is committee reports. The Audit Committee did meet. Was there anything else?
No, but other than we're happy to announce that Mr. Flores, the city council president, is also the new chairman of the Audit Committee.
In his absence. Any comments from the floor? Scouts, I do want to thank you guys for coming out. And I know you're under a time crunch, but if afterwards you've got a little bit of time, and if you need to have some conversations for some merit badge requirements, some of us might hang around a little bit, so feel free to visit if you've got time. Any other comments from the floor? Any council comments? Just a few updates. I was, I had the opportunity to go speak to the Veterans and Business Forum, gave them an update on development here and how that impacts veterans in the community. Several of us also attended the funeral for Jerry Strawn, former Papillion police officer and also former volunteer fire. Mr. Hoynes, Ms. Myers, and myself did go visit with the library staff and also library president Schroder and Ms. Montgomery, one of the members was there as well. And we just talked a lot about the transition and the organization and day-to-day programming and what might change, what won't change. Also went with Lori and Tim and served lunch to the seniors at the Valentine's Lunch. And we've got a great tradition, the Senior Center of Papillion and the Senior Center of Lovistic come together and serve a meal to the seniors, and then some of the elected officials serve lunch, and that's always a great event. serve lunch, and that's always a great event. And then music was by Billy Troy, who you might have remembered him from some of the concerts. He'd moved away and has moved back to the area. Been to several different chamber events, had some interviews with some Bellevue University students that are doing some work on government. Mayor Kindig, Mayor Sanders, and myself did a joint proclamation. And then I also attended a town hall meeting with Senator Sue Crawford. She was giving an update on legislation that she's been sponsoring and what some of her priorities are. And then also attended a chamber legislative coffee where all of the state senators from Sarpy County were to give updates on what was going, what they were sponsoring. And then yesterday, met with the mayor's youth council. They were having a leadership workshop since they were out of school, and they're recruiting some new members to the leadership council, so met with them, and that's always a good group. Two dates to remember. On the 20th of this month, which is Friday from 5:00 to 7:00, is a reception for Robin Clark. And then on March 2nd, as Mr. Hoynes mentioned, from 4:00 to 6:00 is an open house at the police station for Chief Lyons, and then also the swearing-in of Deputy Chief Widded. I think those are the major updates. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Mungard. Please vote.
Five VAs, zero NAs.
We are adjourned.